You've missed going up to the camp.
All right, we're gonna open the Board of Selectment meeting for Tuesday, May 29th, at 6:31. Can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, first up, we have Organization of Board, Election of Chair and Vice Chair. So I will make a nomination to elect Bill O'Neill as Chairman. Is there a second? No second. Is there any other nomination? Is there a second? No second. Is there another nomination?
I nominate Lisa Carpenter.
Is there a second? No second. Bill?
Can I just say something for you? So, I would like to, before I make a decision, I would like to ask a couple of questions. And I guess it sounds like Bill and Edward probably.
Everybody had a nomination, so everybody but me is up there.
Okay, so do all three parties have the time and commitment for this position to give 100% or more?
What do you want to do? Do you want to actually have them answer, or?
Yeah.
We'll start down there.
Obviously, it would or wouldn't be it.
All right, Lisa?
I would say no.
Ed?
Yes, I think I have the time. I'm retired, I'm around town most of the time. I think I have the time and the energy to commit to it.
The, I know the town has voted, and they said that, you know, they didn't want a senior center. Do you guys have any other idea for a senior center? Any other, you know, any of the, any thing you could come up with, or any kind of thoughts you may have?
Ed, do you want to start with that?
Sure. There's no question that the town needs a senior center. This room right here is not a room that the seniors should be utilizing. It doesn't fit their needs. They've been getting by with it. Perhaps the committee could come back with a different plan, and that would be acceptable to the people in Groveland. I know the seniors certainly deserve a center, and the scuttlebutt that I've been hearing is that they just thought that the cost was too high. So maybe they could come back with a lower cost that would meet their needs.
Lisa?
So, I don't really have an answer to that. I'm in support of a senior center in concept. I think it really comes down to how can we do it in a way that's fiscally responsible to the town. So if there were strategies that would result in there not being a significant tax increase, and that I think were consistent with the values of the town, then I would be in support of it.
Bill?
Yeah, I'd like to see them have a senior center. Personally, it can be a benefit to their lives, especially at the end. I'd like to see it be more affordable, more inclusive. Possibly, you know, a couple of ideas I have would be, I know that there's been some resistance to it, V.C. Park. If we put in a quarter of what they asked for at the V.C. Park, we could have a multifunctional facility there for a quarter of the cost, or less. Another idea, I know the library would like to have an extension. Well, it looks like there's a lot of room between this building and the library. I wonder if we could incorporate some kind of design study that would link the two with a senior center in between, so they'd have access to the library all the time. They were there, books, period articles, computers, have access to the town hall without having to step outside, and inhabit to be multi-use, so that not only the seniors of the town could enjoy it, as well as the youth and all of us in between. So there are a few ideas. I think we need to think outside of the box maybe a little bit. I think it can be done. I'd like to see it happen. But again, you know, let's, we've got to, as Lisa said, be fiscally responsible. We have a very limited budget, very limited resources, and we've got to spend the money wisely.
This year, we're gonna have a busy year as a board. We have to hire a police chief, a road commissioner, possibly.
Police chief?
I'm sorry, fire chief, fire chief, fire chief. Fire chief, a road commissioner. Just have some thoughts, what you could do to make the transition smoother. Any ideas to make the transition on, any thoughts on each position, what you would do to require? I have 10.
10?
Is that all right? Looks like I'm gonna be deciding vote here, so.
Lisa, we'll start with you.
So I don't view that as a chair responsibility. I view that as a board responsibility. So some of the questions that you're asking, I understand the concern, but I view it as a collaborative responsibility and not a chair responsibility. In writing, the chair's only responsibility that varies different from the other board members is the setting of the agenda and the running of the meeting.
Bill?
I have to agree with Ms. Carpenter said. I mean, it should be a collaborative effort. The chair shouldn't hold the power of judge, jury, and executioner. There's five board members. They should all have input. And frankly, probably some of these positions that you named, Bill, would be better suited for some kind of quasi-committee put together to bring recommendations to us, so that we could save time and energy.
That's all I'm trying to find out, is what you do.
Yeah, I don't think it's the sole responsibility of the chairman to do either one of those. It'd be a joint effort between all five members.
Next?
What would you do to help the businesses in our town, or also what would you do to bring business to town? As a chair, I shouldn't keep saying you, but as a chair to run the board, I think everyone's taken out of context what I was trying to ask. As a chair person of a board, you would think there would be some direction, and that's all I was asking.
Bill?
That's a very difficult question to answer. It's obviously been one of the town's struggles for years. I know that you formed some sort of business development committee that I'd like to see continue, and see what ideas you can come up with. But it's a problem that's faced Groveland for quite a while. Lack of industrial and commercial base has always been an issue when it comes to revenue for the town. I don't have a one-size-fits-all answer. I don't even have a good answer. If I knew all the answers, I'd run for God. I wouldn't be here. So I'm not gonna lie to you and say I know them all. I don't. I 'll have to reach out to folks like you in the committee and see what you can recommend, and then try to make, you know, sound decisions based on the facts as they present themselves at that time.
I would collaborate with the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission. It's my understanding that they work with communities on developing strategic plans on how to attract businesses to communities, and I think that our not collaborating with them around how to do that is us missing an opportunity for how we could go about doing that in a thoughtful way.
Ed?
Again, that's not the sole role of the chairman of the Board of Selectment, but personally, I think that the town needs to reach out to the business community that we have here now, and find out some things that the town can do differently to expand business. And obviously, business will help out the taxpayers. It won't be a burden on our schools. And as I've said before, you don't see a school bus stop up at our industrial park on Salem Street, or in front of Chesterton. But we need to reach out to the business community. Maybe a committee to find out what we're doing right, what we could do differently to bring businesses into Groveland. And I think that would, the Board of Selectment as a whole could reach out to the community, the business community.
I'll ask one more, and I'll let it go.
Ask a wait till you feel comfortable, Bill.
What?
Ask a wait till you feel comfortable.
Do you think we could do, as a board, to be more productive? What do you think if you were chair, what we could do, what we could change the board to be more productive?
I'm pretty pleased with how our meetings go. I think they're pretty efficient. I do think that maybe when it comes to working on agenda items, maybe if we made more of an effort to sort of review documents better and prepare in advance of the meeting, that that might be helpful. But overall, I feel like meetings, can you, Bill, can you be a little bit more specific about in what way, when you say productive?
Well, possibly as a chair, delegating off some jobs to different chair members, and maybe they put their hand up to do a project, and each chair, each person on the committee would take a chore, or share, or a project, and carry it through. That would be their little thing to do.
So I definitely think that there's an opportunity for that. I think that the chair can do a better job of sort of involving other board members in sort of the responsibilities of the Board of Selectment, and maybe task each of them with having a certain area that they are the go-to person on, that they report back to the board on. I think that would be a positive thing.
Ed?
Yeah, that's a good point. Perhaps the five members, there's certainly somebody, some of the, one of the five that could take a role and vote, or be appointed to different roles to try to get things done, whatever their specialty is. And, you know, moving things forward. There's a lot, there's a lot that needs to be done, and if you assign, put one person responsible for a certain task, then you can hold that person accountable and question, why isn't this done? And that's not difficult, so long as you get somebody to volunteer to do it.
Bill?
Well, if you're talking about, you know, not, I guess, basically trying to restrict people from stepping up to the plate, I think you know me well enough, that anybody wants to step up to the plate and take a swing, I'm off for it. Come on up, take your best swing. I mean, you can never have enough hands, right? There were never enough volunteers. There were never enough people like us willing to step up and do the grunt work, let's say. So, yeah, I think you know me well enough that if anybody stepped up and asked to be involved in anything, my door is always open. Come on in, water's great, you'll love it.
All right, last question. If it's possible, would you be opposed to taking 1% of the CPA tax, and possibly, if we could somehow put it toward maintenance on, like park maintenance, or building maintenance, or pavilion maintenance, stuff that we need, that we can see coming down the line, and lowering it to 2%, and possibly, if was possible, to do, put 1% of the money, it's not gonna cost the taxpayers, aside, and build up a maintenance account, if it's possible?
Is that possible? That'd have to be changed at the state level, right?
Well, is there some way that we could, I know you can't take CPA money, but is there any way you could take 1% of the tax? You can't do it.
That's also a difficult question, because now that Boston is in that group with the rest of us, the money that's available may be severely restricted to the rest of our cities and towns, based on what Boston's gonna suck up.
Right.
So we may want to look at that issue as it evolves over time, and see if it's worth our while anymore to invest that heavily, when our return has been diminished to the point where it's irrelevant, or it just doesn't make sound sense anymore.
Yeah, okay. So, let's go back to nominations. Do you want to make a nomination, Bill?
And I would, and I will, not that I need to explain myself, but I'll say it publicly. I think that Bill O'Neill is one of the type of people, he's not afraid to come into this board, and he's not afraid to open his mouth and say when something's on his mind. He speaks out, and I hate to lose him as a chair to the point where he wouldn't do that. I would definitely like to obviously change the roles, change the seats. So I would probably, I would definitely would like to have Bill O'Neill be the chair, only for the simple fact that he speaks his word, and if he has, if I can get his word that it stay the way he speaks his word, then I would have him be the chair.
So that's a nomination?
Nomination.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Thank God. All right, Bill.
We could do vice chair.
I don't do vice chair, he does.
Come on over.
I can move now?
Oh, yeah. Could wait for 20 minutes to come over to the floor.
Don't forget your nameplate.
No one's gonna know who you are.
Bill, I'll be honest with you, I'm too friggin' old to change now.
We gotta do the other stuff first.
If we can get through it. Okay, folks, I'm new at this. So cut me a little slack for a little while. I'm a quick study, so I'll tell you pretty fast. I think now we need to move on, if I'm correct, to the election of a vice chair?
Yes.
Okay, see, look at that. I'm doing pretty good already, right out of the box. So, any nominations for a vice chair?
I'll nominate Ed Watson.
Decline.
Back to you, Bill. Can I nominate?
I'll nominate Lisa Carpenter.
Do we have a second?
Second. That way I don't have to move again. All those in favor?
Can I make a nomination?
You can.
We have a second.
We have a second. Okay, I don't know what the order is yet.
That's all right. You'll get it. So it's now all those in favor, and if it doesn't pass, then you go back and do a nomination.
All right. All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed?
So it passes?
Yes.
See, stay the same. And now you can do the warrants, or I'll do the warrants.
We got public comment first?
Yeah, well, you can read it, but there's no submitted information for public comment.
Okay. Did we change that policy?
The policy is it still has to be given in writing to the chair at the start of the meeting.
Gotcha. Okay. So we'll move on to the approval of the warrants.
Did you?
I have one statement.
Is it?
No.
Is it a quick statement, Mr. Logan? Do you promise?
And I don't think anything's gonna happen.
Will the board allow a statement to be made? Any objections?
My name is Jim Logan, Washington State, Groveland. Mr. Dunn, you had, at the very beginning, you had mentioned the Senior Citizen Center. You talked about it very quickly. I was wondering if we can rescind something that has already been approved. I would seriously look at the old, I wouldn't even call it old, the electric building that used as a senior citizen center. It's got a good parking lot, and it can be made bigger, made larger. And it would only probably cost $300,000 or $400,000 maybe to renovate it. It's a thought. I just, I know it's going to the water department supposedly, but I was wondering if you could give that, you know, a second shot, because I'm thinking of the senior citizen center. It might be big enough. I do not know.
Yeah, it's a thought. I think it's already been repurposed to the water department, but I'll.
The senior center looked at that building before the water department got it, and it was gonna cost too much, and it wasn't feasible for them. They had the building inspector in there, they did all their due diligence, and.
I don't think it's handicap accessible either, is it?
Yes, yes, it is.
It is?
It is.
Okay, I've only been up the stairs. So warrant approval. So motion to approve payroll warrant 18-47, and the amount of $151,404.17.
Seconded.
Second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Motion to pass bill warrant 18-47, for the sum of $825,233.8, and it breaks down as follows. The town, $76,745.31. Light department, $251,663.63. This can be found on the back page or the second page of your agenda. Water and sewer, $45,531.32. Payroll withholding, $5,620.94. And debt payments, Center Street, Fire Truck, Dispatch Center, Water and Sewer, $445,671.88. Any further discussion?
Seconded.
Oh, yeah, my bad.
That's all right.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All right, moving right along. We have the appointment of Mr. Richard York, Seven Abbott Circle, Groveland, to the position of interim fire chief, effective June 1st, 2018, through August 31st, 2018. Is Mr. York here?
I'll make a motion to appoint Richie York, position interim fire chief, effective June 1st through August 31st, 2018.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that. But could we have a point of discussion first, please?
Certainly.
Could you just give us an update? Because the last time that we met, you were gonna be doing some transition things with interim chief Roshala. Could you just give us an update on that?
Yes, we've been working on going through the books, learning what I need to learn to hopefully do the paperwork side of things. I do have interim chief Roshala still gonna be available, just not on a, you know, full-time basis as he was doing, you know, at now, but I do have my captains below me that will be able to assist, so.
And you feel comfortable with where things are?
I feel a lot more comfortable now than I did last week, so yes.
Thank you.
Would you, and have you got a plan to sit down with the men and discuss topics on a new chief, and what they plan on, what they'd like to have, what they need, and then be able to come back before us?
Yes, we plan on having a sit-down, kind of go through, try to identify issues that we need to address, and that's gonna be one of them. The other sit-down I hope to have is with the board here on what your approach is on, you know, moving forward through these six months to make sure that we do get the study, if you want the study, and actually the guidelines to hire a new chief.
Yeah, just high-level stuff. I know it's only been a couple of weeks, so have you kind of laid out or viewed what you think you'd want to change, and where you're gonna kind of focus to streamline things? I'm not looking for specifics, just.
Yeah, we're already kind of had a few meetings with my officers that we're gonna try to identify the main issues that we have, and try to work on getting some of the outliers that aren't as active back, you know, into the center to make.
Okay, yeah, I wasn't looking for specifics, just wanted to say that, make sure that you had an idea of where things were going.
Oh, yeah, we're gonna hit the ground running.
Perfect.
I'd just like to add that you're stepping up in areas of both responsibility and visibility. Your actions, as well as your words, will carry a much greater weight now than they might have in the past. So it's important that you recognize that professionalism and strive to work with, across all bodies, with this board, with other departments in the town, to reach the highest level of professionalism possible. I mean, that's our goal, right?
It's my goal also.
And we just want to keep it that way. I know that.
I plan on opening dialogue both ways, not just, you know, one way, or, I just want basically back and forth, so we know where we're going, where we stand.
My door's always open. Call 24/7. You have a problem, we can discuss.
Okay.
And that goes for anybody in the town. I have two ears, no waiting, right? So we have a motion, we have a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
Congratulations, and my sincere condolences at the same time.
Thank you very much.
Okay, moving right along. We have the appointment of Joe McCandless. Did I?
You missed Zudek.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. See, I told you I'm new at this one. We have the appointment of Connor Zudek. I'm hopefully pronouncing that right. At 39, Rawland Street, Groveland, to the position of temporary seasonal cemetery groundskeeper. Is Mr. Zudek here?
No, but the cemetery chair is here, if you'd like to speak with him.
Sure. Joe, yeah, we have one at a time. Unless you want to speak to them both at the same time.
Yeah. With the condition that we've got the cemetery in right now, we need the help. And so by hiring, and we can't hire any full-time help, we're gonna do that for the next year. We're gonna be posting a new full-time position. We talked with both these people, and we feel that they'll be able to help us out. They've got a little bit of experience. One is young, he's a freshman high school, but after, he'll, he gets out of school, he's gonna come in after school and, you know, learn the ropes. The other fellow has a little bit of experience, he's 23 years old, and lives on Rawland Street, and he'll be starting immediately, as soon as he meets with the finance director and gets all the paperwork done.
Okay, which one's the young fellow?
Yeah, it would be Joe McCandless. He's already getting his work permit. And the other fellow, he's 23, and Joe is 15.
Yeah, the only concern I have is with the young fellow and machinery and equipment.
He won't be running, he won't be running the big mowers. He'll be just, he's done hand mowing before and weed whacking, and that's what he'll be doing. And he won't be working alone either, he'll be under the direction of Bob Paulizotti.
You certainly understand my concern, right?
Oh, yeah, we have the same concern.
All right, good, good, good. We're on the same page now.
Yes.
Would you like to say anything further on either one?
No, we're just glad we had some people come in for the job, and so we can get going and bring the cemetery back up to the way it should be.
Would this all fit in the budget?
Yes, yes. We went over it with the finance director, and it's gonna be part-time, and we feel that we can, you know, use some of the money that we have left to finish this year up, and then moving forward, depending upon if we get some people to come in for the permanent job. And we're talking with the finance director about some of the money for next year, some of the secretarial work. I've been doing all the billing and trying to do a lot of the paperwork right now. And until you get involved with it, you do not know how much work is involved with a municipal cemetery, where all the ones in West Newry that I'm familiar with, they're all private cemeteries, and you can do what you want. There, you've got a lot of rules and regulations that you have to follow, because it is run by the municipality.
Yeah, I can only imagine, and speaking for everybody in town, I believe we're very appreciative of your work.
We're trying.
Do we have?
I got a question for them.
Sure.
Rock, these are both part-time positions.
Yes.
Do we need to transfer money from the full-time job to the part-time?
I think that was already done at one time.
That's what we're doing?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
It's only, because it's only a month.
Right.
But that impacted a budget zero, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Any further questions?
The biggest problem we have, just to let you know, we had to have both machines rebuilt because the, we put in for a new machine and it was denied maybe next year. So we needed a machine, so we had one rebuilt at the cost of, I think it was fifteen hundred dollars. And the next machine they're working on is going to be thirty-five hundred dollars to repair it. It just, there was no, there was no real order of getting maintenance done on these machines. And I went up to the repair place where they're doing it and went over it with them and it, it needs a lot of work. I mean, these are, these are, well, you know, they're eighteen, eighteen thousand dollar machines, so putting thirty-five hundred dollars into it, you know, will make it last a little bit longer.
Now, at that point, have we installed a preventive maintenance program on these?
We're, we're doing that. It'll be done every, the same with the, with the new Gator we have. We're going to have, have it serviced by John Dare. When we got the Gator, I had them put in a five hundred dollar credit line at John Dare at Rosenkrantz for a tune-up and maintenance on it in the first year while it's under warranty. And so that, so that won't bother, they'll just come in and work on it.
Good, good. That's a prevention, right?
Yes, sir.
Any further questions? Anyone? No? Anyone like to make a motion to appoint Mr. Zudek and Mr. McCandless?
I'll make a motion to appoint Connor Zudek and Joe McCandless effective May twenty-ninth at an hourly, hourly rate of twelve dollars an hour for nineteen point five hours a week.
Seconded?
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All of us in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next up, appointment of John Osborne, Three Pleasant Street, Groveland, to the Finance Board effective May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen. I know Mr. Osborne and I do not see him in the crowd. It's a big crowd out there too, but I don't see his face. Anyone like to?
I'll make a motion to appoint John Osborne, Three Pleasant Street, Groveland, to the Finance Board effective May thirtieth, two thousand and eighteen through June thirtieth, two thousand and nineteen.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
Could I just ask a question?
No. Okay, good.
So when somebody's on the, I was very, very impressed with.
You must have been really impressed.
In the correspondence, Sam Jocelyn's disclosures of conflict of interest, I thought that that was perfectly done. It's what we all should be doing whenever there's a conflict of interest. And I guess I'm just wondering how that applies to the various boards because Mr. Osborne is going from a position of being the person spearheading the senior center to being on the finance board. So how does that, how does that work when someone makes that type of sort of transition?
I would say that's not really a conflict. He was appointed in both roles. He has no financial gain on a senior center. He is, as you'll see later on, he is resigning from the Capital Improvements Committee. He was on both of those as well at the same time, so in this instance, I don't see that as being a conflict.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, so we have a motion to appoint and a second. Any further discussion? No? All those in favor? Congratulations, Mr. Osborne. Next up on the agenda, appointment of Caitlin Gilbert of Salisbury to the position of administrative assistant slash treasury collections clerk effective June eighth, two thousand and eighteen at an hourly rate of twenty dollars and fifty cents an hour for thirty hours per week subject to a successful touree. Is Ms. Gilbert, look at that, you're already at the podium, quick. Open it up to the board for any questions or comments? Mr. Wood?
No, I read everything that was submitted. I didn't have any questions. Looks like she's well-qualified, has a lot of experience, comes highly recommended from Denise, so that's all I need.
Ms. McCandless?
I have a few questions. One is more regarding the process that you sort of undertook to hire this position. And the second question is, it seems that she's going from a higher position to a lower position, so I'd sort of like to hear about that.
Okay, so I heard great things about working for the town of Groveland from Sam Jocelyn, who I used to work with part-time in the town of Newbury. So I put my application in and I got along great with Denise, so I accepted the position. It also works out really well for me because I have two young children at home, so it'll give me more of a chance to be home with them throughout the summer.
So it's a different schedule than you had at your previous position?
Yes.
Lesser hours?
It's only five hours less a week.
So you've only been here a year and the positive change you've made, right? She's heard great things about it.
Thank you.
Please, did you have a question for me about the process?
Oh, just sort of, you know, how many applicants did you get? How many people did you interview, that type of thing?
Yep, so for this position, I received twenty-six resumes. I interviewed five. I started with those with municipal experience first. And then, as Caitlin said, we got along great in the interviews, she came highly recommended, has great qualifications and criteria, so for me, it was a no-brainer.
So you interviewed five people? Okay. Then my other question is, just for clarity, Ms. Gilbert would be the administrative assistant to whom?
So it's a general administrative assistant position. So it works for the board, assists me, helps with public works, does cemetery records, sort of, all general aspects.
Okay, thank you.
What's that? Selectmen, done?
No, have you ever been before the selectmen in the town you were with, like in one of their meetings or sitting with them or?
I actually worked on the rec committee, so one of the selectmen sat on that committee and I worked.
No, no, I mean like running, coming in and taking notes at?
I took notes for the rec committee.
Okay, but not in a regular selectman meeting or?
No, they had their own administrative assistant who did that for them.
Okay. I think that's it, thanks.
Yeah.
Miss May Watson?
Yeah, she certainly comes well-qualified, but I have a question on the, on the procedure. In, in the past, when, she's, she's filling a job that was filled by Cassandra before. And when Cassandra was hired, she was hired administrative assistant and part of her functions was administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen. And at the time, we received, we interviewed three applicants and chose one that we felt was the best one. And, and I looked up the paperwork back in, in June, two thousand and fifteen, and we, at that time, I'll go back to May, May eighteenth, two thousand and fifteen, we received in our correspondence a job description for, job qualifications, a job description, whatever you want to call it, for the building inspector and the custodian's facilities coordinator. We, we were, we came back two, two weeks later and, and we voted it on, on June first. On June first, we received the job description for administrative assistant, and I, I have it here with me. And at the time, looking up at the minutes, I asked to, instead of us waiting two weeks, if we acted upon it right away because we needed somebody on board as soon as possible. And so we, we did with some changes and then it was posted and it was, our meeting was on, on June first, this was posted on June second. And then on July twenty-second, we interviewed three people who the finance director thought were the top three candidates and we chose, we chose one of those three. And I never received any job description in my, looking in the last several meetings for the administrative assistant treasury, assistant treasury collections clerk. So the precedent has already been set. And, and I didn't even look up the other jobs. There was a job with the Highway Department, the Water Department where we received the job description, et cetera, but we don't need to go into that. But if this person is going to be working partly for the Board of Selectmen, I think that we should have been able to weigh in on the job description and also afforded the candidates so that we could interview them ourselves and choose which one, as we did for the building inspector and the custodian facilities person and, and others. And I just think that we were left out of the process.
Can I just comment on that? So the job description changed back when Cassandra was made both jobs. You do not receive every job description unless there's a new position being created or a new job description. So nothing's changed from the current position that's been on the books since Cassandra became the dual role.
When that position changed, was there a vote on that?
Yep.
Okay. Do you recall that, Ed?
No, I don't. I know when Cassandra came on board as an administrative assistant, and I'll just read some of the duties. Answer phones, assist residents, respond to emails, photocopies, file and handle correspondence for the selectmen's office and the finance director, assist with the preparation of selectmen's meeting's agenda, assist with the licensing permit process for all permits and licenses under the jurisdiction of the Board of Selectmen. I, I'm just picking out some of these.
And that's all still in there? Nothing's changed from that job description?
But it would have been nice if we had, if we could have had it in front of us so that we could see if there was any changes that we wanted to make. And there was changes, when, when this first came out, there was changes that were made. Looking back at the, in the minutes, and, and the minutes for the June, the June first meeting, I just read some of it. Selectman Watson wants the administrative assistants' draft job description approved tonight and it will, so it's posted, someone in place by July first. We missed that by a couple of days, twenty-two. Selectman McDonald read the part of the description where the supervision was under the general supervision of the finance director. He thinks that there should be administrative assistant to the Board of Selectmen. So this, this person, the motion made to approve the administrative assistant job description is amended. Administrative assistant, finance, selectmen. Chairman Dunn seconded it. So I just, nothing against, she's certainly well-qualified, but I just think that, that we were left out of the, we were left out of this process and if the person is going to be working at any time for the Board of Selectmen, we should have had a chance to weigh in on it. And I, I don't think that's right, right the way it was handled.
Now, were you part of, Selectman Watson, were you part of the changes that were made in two thousand and fifteen?
Yes.
Is there something specific you see in the job description today that you'd like to see changed?
I can't answer the question because I haven't seen the job description.
If it's the same as you rewrote in two thousand and fifteen, then I guess we've all.
Well, no, the job description changed from them because we then added another whole job. So that remains the same, plus the fifteen hours a week from the other position were combined to make one job description back in two thousand and sixteen when Cassandra became both.
And you see, Chairman, this is exactly what, what I'm saying, that we don't know what was in the, because even in this packet, we don't even have the job description that was sent out to the candidates.
Which two jobs were combined?
The administrative assistant and the treasury collections clerk.
That was previously combined, that's not being combined.
Correct, okay. That's been on the books for the last two years.
And is that the job description you have in your hand?
This is the job description from back in two thousand and fifteen. I don't, I don't have this one. We, we never, we never were given the opportunity to look at it.
I don't know.
Yeah, okay, Mr. Selectman.
Make a motion to appoint Caitlin Gilbert of Salisbury to the position of administrative assistant treasures collections clerk effective June eighth, two thousand and eighteen at a rate of twenty fifty.
Could I, could I just?
We have a motion on the board. Is there a second? I'll second. Now it's open for discussion, you may comment.
Well, yeah, so my comment is that I'm comfortable with this hire.
But nobody's comfortable in hearing you.
I'm sorry. I'm comfortable with this hire, I think this person's very qualified, but I think that in the future, maybe we can have a more sort of clear discussion so that there isn't sort of this misunderstanding that's happening or whatever. Clearly, there's a different view of the facts, so I just think that we could try to avoid that by making sure that. Mr. Watson, what would, in your mind, the way to have avoided this would have been? You would like to see the BOS be involved in interviews for any positions that have a component to them that works with the BOS directly?
We should have been, we should have been given a copy of the job description to see if there was any changes that we wanted to make to it prior to it going out and soliciting for the job. Like I said before, I have nothing against this person, she's certainly well-qualified, but the process is, it, it's not right. It was, it wasn't done correctly.
So you've noted that for the record?
Yes.
I guess my question is, do you want to be specific about moving forward? Would you like any job description to be forwarded to you in advance of hiring?
That has been the, that has been the practice for these full-time positions, some, even some of the part-time positions. As I said, it, I went back into building inspector, custodian's facilities coordinator, which was a part-time job back in two thousand and fifteen. I did happen to see one from the Highway Department where we got the job description. I saw somebody for the Water Department where we, we were afforded the, the opportunity to weigh in on that.
So I don't think that that's an unreasonable request, so why don't we just discuss that moving forward? If we can get a copy of job descriptions prior to their being posted, would that help you feel better, Ed?
Absolutely. And also, I just, the, the question hasn't been answered is that in two thousand and fifteen, when we hired the administrative assistant, we were given three candidates that appeared before the selectmen, they appeared on July twenty-second, two thousand and fifteen, we interviewed all three of them and then we, we chose the one that we thought was, would be the best person and we never got the chance.
Duly noted, you feel that you've been shut out of the process a little bit and?
Well, not a little bit.
I would suggest, Mr. Chair, that maybe that be added as a future agenda item to maybe review how we want to go about it moving forward rather than sort of rehashing it here tonight.
Can I just ask what the, what the role of the personnel director in the town of Groveland is?
This is the same way every position's handled. You get new job descriptions, the building inspector was a completely new job description, the facilities custodian was a completely new job description, the administrative assistant initially was a completely new job description. Right now, we have four jobs posted. You didn't ask for the groundskeeper job descriptions, those have full job descriptions. So I'll be more than happy to discuss which positions you'd like. I can certainly give you every one of them. But you have to know that when you meet every two weeks, that will delay the process if you're reviewing them prior to them being posted. But I have no problem giving you every job description that's written. It just hasn't been that way for years now.
Quick question, that, that job description was rewritten in two thousand and fifteen?
It was rewritten in two thousand and sixteen when you all appointed Cassandra to the joint treasury collection clerk administrative assistant.
And we all voted on that new job description?
To be honest, I don't think so because they were two existing jobs that we just combined into one. So again, it wasn't a new job, we didn't create a new position, we just combined two part-time positions into a full-time position.
It was my recollection at that time that the, the other person had resigned and we just moved Cassandra into that position.
No, there was a job description done.
Is it possible, in the interest of being efficient with our time, to maybe just, Denise, if you know when that happened, just point us to the minutes and then Ed could review those?
Yep.
Thank you.
And all of our job descriptions are on our website, they're all posted here, but I'll be more than happy to give you all the job descriptions.
So just to be clear, I am not interested in interviewing every applicant. So just to be clear, I am not interested in interviewing every applicant for every position?
Neither am I.
Good.
So, Ed, if you have a concern about specific positions wanting to interview them, I think you'd need to articulate that because I wouldn't want it to be a general practice that you were interviewing.
Well, this one particularly, because this person is going to be working as a part-time Administrative Assistant to the Board of Selectmen, as, as a former Administrative Assistant did. So we definitely should have, should have, the person is going to be working directly with the Board of Selectmen, or at least part-time, we should have a chance to weigh in on it.
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to, maybe I didn't get the answer I was looking for, but what is the per, the purpose of a personnel position? What is it? The person gets all the information?
Well, I do think, if I may just comment to Lisa's point, perhaps that's another future agenda item. I would respectfully ask, you have a motion and a second for Caitlin's position. I would actually respectfully ask that you vote on that, and we can discuss this at a, at a future meeting. I have no problem having that discussion, Bill, and providing any information that you want. I don't think it's fair to our candidate standing here before you to have that conversation.
I agree. Sorry.
Let's move the question. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Yes.
And five, nothing anyway, Charlie.
So you'll make a note, Denise, that at some future point?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Discussion and possible vote. We have Matt Cassaway to discuss the upcoming summer program, the appointment of summer program employees. My pleasure having you back again.
Thank you. It's hard to believe we're back again, gearing up for another summer program. I just gave you a copy for your records of this year's pamphlet, which includes our date. We are starting on June 25th, so we'll have a very quick turnaround at the Bagnell School from the school year to the summer rec program this year because of the snow days. We'll be doing our usual seven weeks through August 10th. Our program hours continue to be 8:30 to 3:30. Inside, you will see the planned field trips for this year, as well as our program dates week by week, as well as the tuition this year. So really, the program as a whole isn't changing than last year. We'll have the same number of employees again. I turned that into Denise's last week, so you should have, you should have received a copy of this year's employees, their roles, and their 2018 rates. I am happy to report that after our little dip in enrollment, we are up again this year. So at this point, I checked this morning, and as of this point, compared to last year, we have, we're above by 21.
22.
So that's great to, great to hear. We also have maxed our CITs. However, we do have five on the waitlist. And because of our higher enrollment, I am able to remove those, those children off the waitlist. So we'll be able to accept more CITs because of our camper enrollment this year. We have a great onsite administrative team this year. Brianna Favor will be our onsite director. She's worked at the program for several years. And we will have two onsite assistant directors to, to hold down the fort. And those two as well have, they've worked at the program for several years. So we have a lot of returning staff members, and then we also have some new counselors this year as well. One brief thing that I did want to mention before I can answer any questions is some parents have brought up the idea of safety, you know, thinking about everything that is going on in the world today, which is definitely a legit concern. So we will be looking at the building and our process for the safety of all the children in attendance. In past years, the, the door that, that we use for in and out access at the school has always been open and unlocked. That's going to, that's going to be something that, that we will talk about as a team to see if we need to make changes regarding the, the safety of the children. Unfortunately, that is something that, that we need to think about as, as we do during the school year. So that's something that, that we are in discussion with as, as far as the safety and building access while we are in the building. Yes?
Bill, can I ask a question?
Absolutely.
Sorry to interrupt. I just want to not lose my train of thought. As far as the safety of the school, that's something I've been working on as a Selectman for the last couple of years. Have you talked to the Police and the Fire Department to kind of get their input as to what you're trying to do and trying to mitigate some of those concerns?
Yeah, that's on the list to do. We still, you know, are bottom up. So, so we were hoping to get in contact with them in early June. And also with, with the school district too, and, and working with them. You know, because it is summer, you know, there will be people in and out of the building during that time. You know, so something to think about, just the section of the building that we are in, you know, how we can best manage that, you know, with the comings and goings of a summer rec program. It's not school, so it is a little different. However, we do need to make sure that, that everyone there is safe.
Yeah. Chief Gillen is a good source of information for all that. He's been very involved with the, the high school, the middle school, and Bagnell.
Great.
With the superintendent and the schools and the, and the teachers and the, and the staff. So definitely reach out to him. I know he wants to get more involved with it. He wants to be proactive with everything. So anything that you have concerns for him, he'd be happy to get involved with that. Outside of that, great job again.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Yeah, so that's it. You know, we, we're gearing up. We're very happy with the enrollment numbers. We'll be having our staff orientation in early June, where we meet as a staff for three or four hours to review everything. Just like previous years, all staff are CPI, CPR, First Aid, and AED certified. We require that. We've always, since I've been Director, we require that of the staff. So that's important to us. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
That's at the end. With Selectman Watson, any questions?
The onsite coordinator, what's the asterisk after the salary?
Just to note that, that that person is the Director.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Dunn?
As of going forward, we're still going to be able to have some extra funds to put aside for the maintenance or whatever we decided to do.
Mm-hmm. Yep. We still, we had some funds left over from last year. We've been able to apply some of those funds for scholarships this year, but we also those have extra for the maintenance piece as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wood?
I'm good. Nope.
I just want to thank you for your service again. I think you run, if not, one of the best, the best summer program in the area, maybe in the entire North Shore of Massachusetts, maybe in all of Massachusetts. My kids have enjoyed it over the years. You'll need to add one to your count. I was out of work, and we weren't sure if I could afford it, if we, if he'd be needing it. But I'm back to work, so we can afford it, and he needs it. So we'll be adding that to your count.
Great.
And on behalf of the parents that rely on your services while they're on work all summer, I want to thank you. You do a great job. You keep the kids safe. You keep them happy. They have a great time, and it's, I got to say, it's probably the best value I, I know of. So appreciate it. Thank you, and I hope you continue to do this for another 50 years.
Thank you.
So I make a motion that we approve the appointment of the summer program employees for the program presented by Matt.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Guess not. All those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Thank you so much.
Appreciate it. No, thank you. Next up is the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission to present Groveland's Housing Production Plan. Joint discussion with the Planning Board and vote to adopt plan.
Good evening. Thanks for having me. Does this work? Can I use these microphones?
Yes.
Great. For the record, my name is Karen Conard. I'm the Executive Director for the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission, and I've been in that position for about a year and a half now. And I'm very proud of the, the role that the commission plays throughout the region. And I'm here tonight to explain to you what we've been doing for the past year with regard to trying to improve the situation for housing in our region. But first, before I do that, I thought I would spend just one slide trying to explain who the heck we are. So we've been around for almost 60 years now. We were created by state statutes. We represent 15 cities and towns in the Merrimack Valley, essentially along the Merrimack River from Andover and Methuen to our west, all the way to Salisbury, Newburyport, Amesbury to the east, following the river. What we do is essentially manage state and federal grants and contracts for the betterment of the 15 communities. So what essentially we do is take that grant money and leverage it and spend it on the communities. The bulk of our budget, over 50%, is related to transportation projects alone. We are governed by a 16-member Board of Commissioners, one from each community and one representing the at-large community. And we are fortunate to have Bob Arakalian as your, as the Commissioner from Groveland. And I, I know he's here tonight in the capacity as Planning Board as well, so that's fantastic. You are very well represented. We have 15 staff members. We work in four different areas, as mentioned right there. Transportation, Community and Economic Development, Environmental Services, and GIS and Mapping. So in that regard, we help each of the communities. What we do is identify what they need and help their staff do it better. So the reason for my presence here tonight is we got some grant money from the state to manage and run a process to develop a regional housing plan, the first of its kind in the state, whereby each of our communities will benefit from a housing production plan that speaks to their community's needs. And we will look at a regional theme for what the region needs for, needs for all types of housing, affordable, multi, single-family, you name it. So we're proud to say that this cost all of our 15 communities not one single penny. We managed $100,000, and we'll get 15 separate housing production plans out of that. And if you were to hire a consultant to do it for your specific town, it would run you about $20,000 to $25,000 for one plan. So we've really done a good job leveraging that state money. And to do this well, we held two, let me get that in a second. We held two workshops in Groveland, specific to Groveland. The first one was in June where we talked about needs and showed you some data that talked about what we found to be true in Groveland. And then in November, we came back and talked about specific strategies that would work well in Groveland, maybe nowhere else, but specifically here in Groveland. So what you have in front of you right now is what are the elements of a certified housing production plan? And by that, we mean a plan that, a housing production plan is something that you, as a proactive community, would do as an effort to recognize that a healthy community would get to 10% of its housing stock as being affordable. I would say as a region, we are at 10%. Several of the communities are not quite at 10%, including Groveland. The plan suggests a way for Groveland to, to grow in a responsible way with all types of housing. So to have a plan in place means you've really adopted a blueprint, you've thought about where you'd like to see development, you've thought about where you'd like to see development not occur. And so the effort is before you tonight in draft form. So these are just the elements that the state requires when you do a housing production plan. So for each of our communities, we've done that needs assessment. We've talked about housing development considerations and constraints, what you have for zoning, water, and sewer, and utilities, and really what promotes and what limits growth here. We then get into a, a chapter on goals and strategies. Again, what works well, best for Groveland, recognizing that not all communities want to grow the same way. But I do think that the theme for our regional plan will be that. You need to grow to stay healthy, and Groveland's a good example of that. So I'll get to that in one second. Overall, all of our 15 communities saw the same five overarching themes, which include providing support for seniors to both age and place and age and community. Some seniors want to stay in the, in the town that they've grown up in, but the house they're in right now or the unit doesn't work for them anymore. So how do we help them stay in the community and transition? Every community could benefit from more rental housing. There's a shortage of that statewide. I could spend a whole hour on that conversation, but you don't want to hear that. Every community could benefit from a greater diversity of housing options, not just single family, not just your typical garden-style condo. In the case of Groveland, as with many other communities, we would like to help you rehabilitate your existing housing stock and keep that affordable, and there are programs to do that. And lastly, really, every community could benefit from more affordable homeownership options as well. So common themes throughout our 15 towns. So here are Groveland's specific themes. And as I mentioned, it's really important to grow as a community, stay healthy. You are one of the communities that is continuing to grow. And I think the gentleman who was speaking about the summer program with the net increase of 21 or 22 touched on that. You have a healthy community in that you've got a younger population that is growing. You've also got a significant older population that is growing, and the composition of your households has changed. You do have less households with children, and you have a lot more single-family households, and many of those single-person households are seniors as well. You will have, yes?
Could I ask, where did you gather your data from?
Sorry. Very important point that we talked about in the first two workshops. The data comes from 2000 and 2010 U.S. Census data, as well as the most recent American Community Survey data, which is a five-year look, and the most recent one was done in 2015. So sounds dated. It's the most recent data there is. The new data that will come out through the 2020 Census will most likely be available a couple of years after that. So we, across the board, used all that data.
So the most up-to-date is eight years old?
The most up-to-date is a, is a survey that is as recent as 2015, so...
2015, okay.
In its third year.
Okay.
The, as with many of our communities, the elderly or over 65 population is estimated to grow significantly. So the question is, how do we, how do we, as a region, and how do we help each community to talk about what needs are specific to that community? And in this case, how do we help more seniors in, in the way that you see fit here? You have about 80% of your residents are owners, and only 20% are renters. The region is more like 65-35, and that speaks to the point. It would be good to have more rental options, whether, whether people can't afford to, to own a home or don't want to own a home anymore. And your renter households tend to be older than the rest of the region. Just interesting fact. So we looked at strategies that made sense to address the needs from your needs assessment. And in every community, we tried to organize strategies into three different areas. Planning and policy, things that could, could be changed from a regulatory or zoning or municipal standpoint. A production, how can the community make more units? What are the things that the community can do to make the production or the construction of units more viable here? And preservation, which is important in all of our communities, keep those existing and future housing units affordable. This is a good time to talk about how many units you have on what's considered the state's subsidized housing inventory. You have 80 units, and the good news is 75 of those 80 units are basically guaranteed in perpetuity for a really long time. Most communities are very much in danger of losing units to what's known as expiring use. They're only heated, they're only restricted for a certain amount of time, but your units are very well preserved. So that's the good news. The challenge here would be if you want to achieve 10%, you would need to create 162 more affordable units. Affordable means that you've income-qualified the folks living there, you've given some sort of a subsidy to the production of the units, and there's a deed restriction on, for a period no less than 15 years, but ideally in perpetuity.
And the 80 units that currently exist, are there any restrictions on those regarding age?
That's a really good question, and I have the, and someone might anecdotally know that, and I can get you that information. It would be on page... There with me. If you have the plan in front of you, and y'all may know this better than I do, it's on page 43 of the plan. So 64 of the units have perpetual affordability, including River Pines Turnkey, which is 58 rental units, and Savory Woods...
So River Pines does have restrictions, correct?
...which is three ownership.
In order to reside at River Pines, what, what criteria need to be met?
I don't think it's age any longer. I think it's...
Just in summary?
No, it's...
It's age and disability?
Age and disability.
So you either have to meet a certain age requirement or a certain disability requirement?
Correct, for River Pines. Yep.
And that's what, 65 of the units?
That was 58 of the units. There are three ownership units at Savory Woods. I don't know if there's an age restriction there. And 11 of the ownership units at Groveland Commons are restricted as well. And I don't know the, the makeup of the existing five. And I don't know the makeup of the existing five.
So 50 -- I think those other two are not age-restricted.
I don't think so.
So the only ones that are age-restricted or ability-restricted are the ones at the Pines.
Okay. So with that, in the plan itself, we have a list of suggested strategies in each of the categories. These are just a sample of what we suggested in the planning and policy suggestion. Something that this region doesn't take enough advantage of is to work with before- and nonprofit developers to create affordable housing on privately-owned sites. I don't know if y'all have heard of community development corporations, but nonprofits who are able to cobble together disparate sources of funding in order to make a project more financeable from an affordability perspective. You need a really big subsidy to help pay to bring down the cost of a unit to therefore make it more affordable. Another one that would be worth talking about, especially because your population is projected to age, just like everybody else, would be to investigate opportunities and models for shared living situations with seniors. I know that might sound a little creepy, but some seniors would rather live with another person than live alone and find a way to share the unit where they are, and we'd be happy to help explore that. There are formal programs for that. Another thing that's really important is to help everyone in the community understand what affordable housing really means and who the profile of affordable housing is. It could be the woman you just appointed as the administrative assistant. It could be many of your teachers and entry-level firefighters, patrolmen. So it really speaks to who needs housing. An interesting statistic that's in the plan is that 32% of your households in Groveland are at or below 80% of the area median income. So they would qualify for affordable housing if you had units available. That's a third of your population. That's notable. 67% of your low-income households, those at or below 80%, spend more than 30% of their gross income on their housing needs. So that makes them cost-burdened, and that's something we really are trying to reduce. So I'll stop talking in one minute, I promise. Here are some proposed strategies regarding production. And we're not just here shilling or pushing for affordable housing for really low-income persons. We're looking for everybody, low, moderate, from 60% to 120% of area median income. That would really address many of the needs in all of our communities. Groveland is very lucky to have both an affordable housing trust fund and Community Preservation Act funds, and we'd love to find a way to put those funds to maximum use. And we'd love to help you use a model bylaw from some of our other communities to consider open space residential development zoning, which allows for greater density while still preserving open space and achieving the same number of units. We spent a fair amount of time at our second meeting in November, talking about where it might make sense to think about development and where it would make sense to leave things alone. And from that discussion, we came up with 10 sites that are on page 49. I gave my list away to one of the planning board members, but you have it on your -- it's right before the map. It's not in the PowerPoint, it's in the actual housing production plan itself. Thank you. So the idea would be that every housing production plan submitted to the state needs to suggest where housing development could occur. It used to have to be very specific, parcels, owners, that kind of thing. The state has relaxed their standards and said, "We're looking for areas. We're looking for broader descriptions." So we talked about this, and this is a good point to suggest that in no way does approval of this plan tonight mean that you've approved all sorts of housing on all of these sites. What it means is this is a suggestion for where it might make sense. And another point about passage of this plan, the plan would stay in effect for five years, and there is no enforcement of the plan per se. If you don't achieve any strategies or any goals set forth in the plan, no one's going to come after you. It really is a blueprint for the town to say to the next developer that might come knocking on your door, "This is what we think is appropriate for Groveland. Here's where we'd like to see it. Here's where we'd like to not see it." So it really is supposed to be your plan.
So how did you identify these sites on that page? Is that because there was land of -- like, what was the analysis that was done?
It really was a conversation around this table. We had some zoning board members, some planning board members. We had Mr. Dempsey, who I think represents conservation. We had some folks from the senior center and the housing authorities?
Yep.
We had a very nice mix of folks, and we talked about what are the needs, where could we meet them, are there parcels that have room for development, and that's what populated this list.
What is the current status of those parcels in general?
That's a great question. That could be anything from on the market to guy owns it and doesn't want to do anything with it.
Okay.
So we're not marketing any of these per se.
No, I'm not. I'm just wondering, but there's some suggestion that they could be available.
Correct.
Okay.
And you know, if you're looking at the list, it will talk about development acres. It will also talk about environmental considerations, constraints, wetlands. So you've got to think that, in the case of the first one, which is farmland now and it says 47 acres, wetlands is a significant part of that. So what I don't know from looking at this list and would require further research would be how much of that land is developable. But at least it's a good start. It means it may have access to utilities and maybe something that's been talked about at a planning level. And we're really excited, by the way, that Groveland's looking for a planner, and we'd love to help with that little pitch. And that will be great for the planner to do, is to interface with the development community, with you all, to try and find reasonable development, if that's the will of the town. This is really designed to make you feel as educated and knowledgeable and comfortable with what you have and what you'd like to move forward with, as possible. So, okay, so the last set of strategies has to do with preservation. And the number one on everybody's list is develop the system to make sure we keep all of your subsidized housing inventory units on the list and they don't expire. As I mentioned, you are very lucky in that 75 of your 80 units aren't going to expire in anybody's lifetime. The Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is looking to hire a housing coordinator to try and keep an eye on everybody's housing inventory, how it's coming, help communities figure out what they may want to implement from their plan. So we're excited about that. We've recently applied for a grant to do that. Some of these suggestions may apply very well to some units and not at all to others, and you may have some other ideas. So this might be a really good time to say to you, these were our thoughts. That being said, this needs to be your plan. It's editable to your liking, to both your liking and the planning board. And speaking of that, the next steps for the plan would be that the planning board reviews the plan and recommends approval to the selectmen who then vote on the plan. So I'm really excited that I do see, I did see a quorum of the planning board.
And what does the DHCD stand for?
Thank you. Sorry, we live in a world of acronyms. That's the state's Department of Housing and Community Development. They keep track of all this information on behalf of the cities and towns. So that was a really long-winded and long-story-short-type conversation. I would be happy to take questions, talk about edits, flow down, not assume you know everything that we've been doing for the past year.
I have questions. Do you recognize any questions?
Certainly. We'll get to Mr. Wood first. Any questions at that end of the table?
You said the plan is in effect for five years?
Correct.
But we're not held to the specific plan where it's more fluid and it's able to be changed and adjusted as perceptions change?
Correct. And the idea to have a plan in place for five years is, to the extent you're working toward the production of additional units, if you were presented with a 40B proposal that you did not like, you could petition the state to say, "We have a housing production plan in place." And in the case of Groveland, if you are working toward the production of as many or as few as 12 units in a given year, which would be half a percent of what you need, you could create a safe harbor for the town and say no to a 40B. That being said, this might be a good time to mention, some communities take the opportunity of a 40B to work with what the plan offers and get from a 40B what it is they're looking for. They can control their own destiny with regard to design guidelines and other amenities that might come with the project. So some communities are very much apprehensive of 40Bs, and some are looking at it as an opportunity to see what makes the most sense.
Okay. Got it. That's it.
Just, I think right now, almost all of our current housing stock, the 58, except for the Pines, is 40B, is that correct?
I don't know that. That's a really good question.
Yes, and no. We have very few true 40Bs.
Okay, so...
This may also be a good time to explain that the adjudicating body in a city or town to approve a comprehensive permit or a 40B would be your zoning board of appeals.
Okay. So of the 80 units that we have, 58 are at the Pines, and then the remaining 22, what percentage of those are 40B and what percent are?
14. 14 40Bs.
14 of those are 40Bs?
14.
Okay, so then we have eight that are not 40B.
The microphone will jam. I think you ought to turn it on.
I don't know where everything is, but there we go. All right, I don't know where everything is, and it's 58 out back, 11 over, straight across, okay, that's the Grove Commons. Further down, 113, there's three units down there. Savory Woods has a new street name now. They didn't put Savory Woods on it, but that was the name of the subdivision. We own at least two duplexes, so there's four more units there. Now, where the rest of them come from, I don't even know that.
It's two.
Oh, that's right, yeah. What's his name? He built those, yeah, yeah. So...
So I guess my next question is, I've only been here 14 years, and in Groveland speak, that's not very long at all. What do you, do we have a sense of what the barriers have been to reaching that 10% that we're supposed to have?
That's a good question.
So there's that question, and then the other piece of that is, just based on the brief time that I've been here, there is a lot of resistance. But I look at those figures that you provided, where 32% are at or below median income. So we're really talking about one-third of our community that fits this criteria. It's not an idea of us and them, right within our community, our people that meet the criteria and have the need for affordable housing.
Right. If you were to ask me my opinion, which I think you just did, some of the barriers to the creation of more housing here would be the zoning, the lot sizes, dimensional controls. And a big concern in Groveland, which is not unique to this region, is the lack of sewer and the requirements that septic systems bring. There's a challenge with the size of the lot and the need for septic, and we appreciate that. So on behalf of the communities for whom septic is a big percentage of their land, we are looking into innovative ways to try and find developers who use alternative, innovative, septic systems from a design perspective. But neither of those suggestions are unique to Groveland. Groveland has a lot of things going for it. You have access, you've become attractive from a price perspective for single-family homes. You have some, one of the smallest affordability gaps in our region, which means someone making the median household income can afford a $366,000 house. And the average, the median sales price right now is about $380,000, so that gap is only, only about $1,400. I think that's either the smallest or the second smallest in our region. In perspective, Newburyport's at about $190,000 for their gap. So you're doing a good job, whether you're trying to do that actively or not, in matching demand and who can pay what. That was a very long-winded answer to your question.
Is it?
Mr. Dunn.
Jim, are we about, what, 10% are we at, as far as our affordability?
You're right.
We've got 3.3. We're supposed to be 10. We're at 3.3. You're supposed to have 10%. We've been at this early 70s, about 45 years now, and we got 80 units, okay? But we're supposed to have 240, 250 units. What we kind of see right now, we are talking to a developer, but quietly, something may come of it, maybe nothing comes of it. But we know there is a need for senior housing because what you have out back, which is subsidized, the federal government's not doing that anymore. So what you have to do is you have to get with a developer who's in that business that understands a thing called tax credit, where his income that he would receive, even a less, is his at that point. And putting our hands around that right now is not that easy because it's something new to us.
And that's different than, for instance, an over-55 community? That's not the same thing, correct?
I'll say correct for that.
It could be, it could be, because, you know, right now, a lot of, you know, there are two, two things that you kind of need. One is senior housing, affordable housing, and two is family housing. And family housing is a little bit more difficult because, and I want to check you one as, what did you say a single-family house, the affordable price would be?
The median sales price is $380,000.
Where'd you get that from?
The Warren Group.
Warren?
Yep.
Because sometimes, what we were hearing last was $234,000.
We used Warren Group data. I believe it's 27 --
Does the state accept that? Does the state accept that?
They accept the data source, sure.
You said the median was 240?
I mean, don't forget, that number's going to fluctuate. So at a point in time that we use for everybody, the Warren Group provided us with the data, and the state understands our framework.
Does the state accept that?
The state accepts our data sources as part of this report, yes.
Yeah, because, I mean, you know, we're supposed to go to the banks that would fund the project, you know, it's a 40B situation.
Where's your data coming from?
Well, this is it. We, believe it or not, we're getting it from lawyers because they represent development. And it's easier to get it from them than it is, believe it or not, to find. I call Salem Five used to be in the business. They don't want to be in the business anymore. That's one of the problems.
You've got a gap big enough now to drive the Eiffel Tower through.
Yeah, I mean, it's, I mean, you can build right now, they can do duplexes.
It would seem to me, though, that you could just take the annual data from bankers and tradesmen of the closings for the year, and you could use that data to come up with...
Well, you've got to look at the entire Merrimack Valley, and when you throw lawns and hayland, it's, it comes right down.
Oh, but I thought that 234 figure is not just for Groveland?
Right.
No, we're supposed to be, the numbers that we get is for the entire Merrimack Valley area.
Right. Let me, let me make an important distinction. The number you're talking about, Mr. Chairman, the 230-ish, that would be what you could sell an affordable unit for, and the 380 that I'm quoting from the Warren Group is the median sales income, median sales price for a house. So your number speaks to, when you're asking about the state and affordability, that's your correct and our --
All right, so that makes more sense, because that number seems really low.
And that's why, you know, the builders don't want to do it. When you get into a condo, it's $170,000. We got condos selling for $350,000. So, you know, the disparity there is crazy. But when you get into rents, and I did a, kind of like a walkthrough of some people that do rent properties, and I got anywhere for a two-bedroom from $1,000 at $1,200 to $1,500, and I got a house that was rented for $1,800. And, you know, this is what I was using to compare to Nichols Village, because I can't compare to that. It's like, it's not apples to apples or apples to oranges. That's apples to watermelons. And, you know, to go in and then develop, like, a rentable unit, a rentable condo, whatever you want to call it, you know, they have to do those for $170,000. Well, that's, that gets to be a problem, because the, when you look at a cost today building, you're looking at about $260 a square foot. That's what their total cost is. That's where these high prices come from, you know?
So if I may, the trick is to help provide, to close that gap and provide a, find, identify funding sources to subsidize these units, because otherwise the price is prohibitive.
Well, this is the whole thing, like, they'll look at if they build a duplex, okay? Because they're not going to build a house. I can tell you that. They're not going to give away a $260,000, I mean, a $650,000, $1,000 house for $234. It's not going to happen.
But what about even like, something like, is Georgetown comparable to us at all?
Actually, they are, yes. Their affordability gap is similarly small.
They did the right thing, and it's where I'll come to next if you want.
Because what is that overlook facility that they have? How did they do that?
Is that the big complex on Tenny Street?
No, it's on, yes, well, it's, yeah.
There was a bunch of apartments, essentially, so I don't know the --
They got the whole thing. It's all around.
I don't, I don't know exactly the number of units created there, but because they're rental units, they only had to deed-restrict 25% as affordable, but all of the units in the entire complex count because they're rental units. They count toward your --
They put them into their LIP program, which is what we would like to see done. That way, you keep them in perpetuity. That's the key word, perpetuity. Because if you don't, as you keep increasing your housing stock... Because if you don't, as you keep increasing your housing stock, you're going to build more and more and more and more. You'll never, you'll never reach the end, believe me. For the 40B where you only get 25%, you'll never reach the end.
So you're saying, if you were to find a developer and say he was to buy a piece of land and he was to say, put in a common development, maybe duplex, 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 he possibly could get the cost offset through grants?
Um, it completely depends on who the developer is and their eligibility for these tricky, hard to put together funding.
Right, hard to put together funding.
Right. There are certain entities, private and, 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 um, for-profit and nonprofit. And one of the things we'd like to do is help introduce who those folks are to the communities that are looking for those kind of developers. And, and then conversely, um, there are communities that don't want to see this and they've told us that and we, we appreciate that. We respect that.
Right. But you also have to remember too, if you go affordable, more kids, possibly for the school system, where if you went over 55 or something like that, you're not going to.
Although I would guess in an apartment complex, what's the percentage, for instance, of a place like Georgetown? I would guess most of those units don't have kids.
There's, there's always the big perception and the big concern that the larger the development, the greater concern for, uh, school-aged children. And every single study has proven that, um, that to not be the case. Because of the type of unit that you're developing, um, you could say that they're over 55 and you can't be under a certain age if you live there. So that's your call to make. Um, there are some communities that are actively seeking units to provide space for families so that their school enrollment numbers don't get any lower. And that's a real concern and we want to keep communities healthy. And again, those are specific to your community. We're not advocating for, for one or the other, but we'll help you with the one that you think you want to identify.
And one other question.
Sure.
Oh, sorry. With Georgetown, did they have sewer there?
Um, I don't know that.
They didn't have sewer?
All the smart people in the room are saying no.
At that Tenny project, they don't have sewer?
No, they don't have sewer at all.
They don't?
Yeah, they don't have any sewer down in Georgetown whatsoever at all.
So in essence, they were able to overcome that barrier, correct?
I, I keep hitting the wall. I keep saying we need to push the sewer. Because what we're running into now, even in single-family developments, is we, we've got two older developments in town that are up, uh, you know, towards Salem Street, Centers Street area. They really need it. And we're keep pushing further out. As we push further out, you're not even going to be able to build sewer because it's going the other way at that point. The pump system you'd have to employ, believe me, it'd be breaking down daily. So plus the fact that a good part of this town does not have a water distribution system either. I, I got, I got one guy over here, he can, he can tell you how far down he, he pushed the pipe just to get water to his house and, and exactly what the problems are. But this is in Southwood. But it's, it's, they're in Groveland as well. You go down Seven Star Road, you go down, um, was it Bear Hill? Uh, you go, what's it, Byfield Road into, into Georgetown? There's no water distribution down there. That's, that's, it's a problem for firefighters.
But it seems to me that there's been other communities that have been able to navigate that without putting sewer in. And I think the, the notion of putting sewer in Groveland is a huge undertaking for a small community at a huge cost.
It, without subsidization, yes. We hear, I hear, uh, prices all over the place. I've heard 20, 25, 30, 35,000. And it depends what they run into, I can tell you that. We don't know.
You mean per, per house?
Per house.
One of the reasons that the planning agency for the region got involved in this conversation was, we're good at collecting best practices and good at introducing communities to, to other folks in the region who've done something before and you don't have to make your own mistakes. Um, one of the things we do on a regular basis is hold the mayor's, town managers, town administrators meeting. Um, and I've invited Denise to a bunch and, you know, in her spare time she, she can come to those. Um, but the idea is to start meeting the folks who've tackled that problem. Um, so I know Georgetown would be more than happy to get on the phone or come over here and meet with you all and talk about how that project dealt with septic and how they've looked at it in other ways. So that's the idea of trying to get us involved.
But you count what you need in that case is you need a developer that's going to work with you. And, and again, this word perpetuity, that's what that is. Once you get that 100 units, 120 units, whatever it was, that's going to really help you out. But if you're going to, you know, go out, build 100 units and you only get 25 and you keep doing that, you get nowhere. That's where you got over here. You got nowhere.
He's treading water at that point.
Exactly. So it's, it's imperative that the town work with someone, a developer, who has ties to banks with money.
It sounds like the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission is a really good source of making those connections.
So we.
We can work together.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, this, we should pass this housing production plan because we'll show the state that there, we're working towards our 10%. And that will mean a big, uh, move as far as grant applications. And I've known, we've had a few grant applications that show, they, they want to know what we're doing with our housing. So I'm interested, that's why I'm interested in passing this.
But it sounds like we can't pass it until you do.
Well, we're recommending to you.
It's why you have a.
Yeah, we're going to do it all tonight.
Right, but my only question is, was it posted as they were going to take a vote on this as well?
Um, just a couple of point of order things, Walt Sarson, Vice Chairman, and I've been on 25 years. So this is the first I've heard of this. So who commissioned this report?
So the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission started this conversation a year ago in March. We had the two, um, information sessions to first talk about needs and that was in June here, and then strategies in November.
Okay. Now, when you did that, did you take into consideration the master plan the planning board did?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Okay, and also the affordable housing?
Any plan that you may have had was something we looked to?
Okay.
To glean from?
Because that, because this plan doesn't significantly, um, doesn't really show that. So let me just ask a couple of quick questions which involve strawberry, thank you, uh, Strawberry Fields. Um, this board pitched for a giant zoning change on Strawberry Fields way back, over 20 years ago. Back when the town, we were trying to get the Board of Selectmen to purchase it for 300,000. And because that was delayed, it cost the town 3 million. Now, there was a, a big overlay district that was going in there for the purchase of that, protect the wells. There was, Mike was in on this too, I think, with conservation, uh, to protect those areas, the wildlife. And then also there was going to be a Brooksby Village type of overlay district in there. Some of the town fields were going to be moving in there for sports and athletics. So the seniors could go in, everything was going to be affordable, and there was a large enough area to do it with over 200 acres. That's one of the sites that was tagged on this plan. And that was going through. So my question is, where is that in the mix coming forward, um, to go through? And, and I did look through the plan and it does have some of the basic data in it. Um, I personally am not prepared to vote for this this evening. I need to do a little bit more research, uh, to see what was actually included. But the planning board has been working on this and I've been working on it with my board members for over two decades, trying to get some of this stuff into play. We did, uh, Jim is correct. We did talk to a developer recently who's going to have a parcel of land to try to get into the affordables. We're trying to make them all rentals because they 100% count, just like Georgetown did, uh, going forward. So, and, and it's true, so this is going to be another, another piece of the master plan. And then where is the master plan as far as the Board of Selectmen are concerned? It's like, has that been accepted in? Has it been updated? Has, has anyone turned into their, uh, their five-year plans?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay, so.
Just a matter, just a point of, of order. How many boards do we have here?
There's four planning here.
The planning and chairman of the planning?
There's four out of the five planning board members here.
And zoning board is here?
No.
Just planning?
So.
So can I ask the master plan that you're referencing, when was that, when was the last time that came before the board?
The, the master plan was initially put together and commissioned in the nineties. And it went through, through all the surveys in the town. And then it came up, all the, matter of fact, all the new, that map that was just up there, the zoning map, that came from that master plan. That took seven years to work with and actually Jim found the missing point to tie that all together behind some boulder somewhere, behind someone's house on Main Street. So that was forced in there, your act of protection, uh, all those plans and everything came from the master plan with a survey through the entire town and what they were looking for, from sidewalks to what type of subdivisions. Apartments was number one back then as well because there is a vast shortage of that in Groveland. And we've been trying to get that and Jim is correct on trying to get a developer to put in apartments for rental. And I guess the senior center did not pass, if I, if I got that correct. So there's another spot there that can be adding to that and those can be 100% added in or at least thought about it anyway going forward. So the master plan was done in each board, each town, each department put together.
When was that, when was the last submission?
That was done from 2000 up to 2007, I believe, and then it was handed off to the Board of Selectmen to accept. And we had a little problem back then, same board but different members, obviously. Um, and what they kept doing was delaying the final installments of the payments to putting it to somewhere else, so it stretched it all out. But in that was a five-year plan of every single department. And one that comes to mind right away, or two actually, conservation with purchases of different land and the, uh, rec committee with the Washington Fields right down here at the Pines and others. That was all part of that master plan and those plans came true. So that was supposed to be a living document that every five years, or just as soon as somebody came up with one, uh, was adding into different pieces. Part of it was the affordable housing plan. This would be a big piece of that, uh, going through. Um, I don't disagree that at all, that Groveland needs senior housing, we need affordable housing, and we need apartments more than anything else. And that's why I was asking only about the overlay district in Strawberry Fields because that would solve a good piece of it uh, in many different areas.
Denise, do you know where this master plan is?
So I guess 2007, it predates everyone here on the board, certainly predates my tenure.
So.
Something we'll have to reexamine because I don't think anybody's up on it.
But can, can I just say something?
Certainly.
Are we, are we here to discuss a five-year plan? Are we here to discuss just voting this in, this policy in?
Well, this policy is part of a five-year plan from what I read and it's got a lot of things.
But what I'm saying to you is, what I'm trying to say to you is by us voting this in, is it going to change a five-year plan? This is just a.
Because you, it depends on what the, what the town decides to do with this project, because I believe you should point it out. We can ignore this and we can just use it for marketing. And we can say that we have a plan, and we do actually. The planning board has been a piece since I've been here 25 years, putting hundreds and thousands of houses over the years. And so has Jim. Bob's been in there too. We've been doing a lot of this planning that you put all these hours in, you put together master plans and, and that was last updated, by the way, I believe in 2014.
And, okay, so, since no one seems to know where it is, can you get a copy to Denise, please?
We have a copy in the library. Was the clerk's got a copy? Um, and a copy was recently sent out to, there was another commission that was actually looking at that recently.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, um, we consulted any and all existing plans to develop this so that we would align our effort with any plans you may have done. And so part of this is to say, is what you suggested in that, in that old iteration of the master plan, something you still want to do? Um, and if so, great. Again, this is a blueprint. Um, it really would serve as the housing element in an eight-chapter master plan when you're ready to update that. So it's, it's ready to go. It's the most recent data we have.
Um, I'm just questioning like some of the areas that you targeted and, and some of the people that.
With all due respect, we didn't target anything. We had a community meeting where I think 12 people stood around a map and suggested sites and we just took notes.
Right, so, but some of those, some of those sites that you have suggested may never come to fruition because the planning board would know on some of them by looking at them. So they're not unrealistic sites.
Well, with all due respect, we had some planning board members at this conversation. So we, we certainly weren't doing, creating a list in the back and we would never do that.
I'm just saying that some of these people.
But this doesn't edge in, this doesn't edge in the site.
How many, how many communities at this point have accepted?
Great question. Uh, two out of the 15. So Habrel and Newbury both a couple of weeks ago were the first two to adopt. You would be the third. Um, my colleague Mike Parquet, who is a Groveland resident, is at the town of Merrimack tonight hoping to do the same thing that I'm doing here. Um, it was a bit of a divide and conquer. Um, so we are slowly but surely chugging our way through the communities, respectful of town meeting and, um, some of the busyness, uh, in the cycle right now. I know that you've had some, some reconstitution of officers. So we're sensitive to the way that the communities each need to meet. So, um, the answer to your question is two so far.
So, so, yeah, Swickman, what if we could just?
So if we vote on your plan,
Yep.
that doesn't supersede the master plan that he's talking about from five years ago?
Correct, not at all.
And if we don't vote your plan, that doesn't implement his master plan either?
Correct.
Right. So they're separate entities?
Correct.
Okay.
In, in, in the plan, we're not voting on locking this plan in tonight.
Correct.
It's just, it's just a blueprint. It's just a suggestion area.
Correct.
So we're not really locking anything in other than the concept of the plan.
You got it.
Okay.
Swickman, Watson?
Uh, yeah, I read through this whole, whole thing and it, it's very informative. Uh, this map that you, you supplied, could you explain that a little bit? Uh, you've got the, what, uh, eight or 10 sites that you have listed on here?
Correct.
And you got, you got four of them listed as farm property?
Yep.
Uh, now, are you looking at, at those particular sites for, for housing?
These were sites that had some development capacity, had, um, frontage, had some of the features you would want in land that could be developed by someone at some point. They didn't pose a threat to the preservation of open space. Um, they were suggested land, uh, properties from that meeting of about 12 folks around a map back in November. We had representation from the planning board, the conservation commission, the ZBA, um, I'm, I'm running out of names. Um, senior center, housing authority. We had a nice mix of folks who could speak to where the needs were and, and, and talked about how it made sense to try and cite new housing near services as opposed to out where they can't get to anything. So it was a thoughtful conversation about what land should we talk about, what land should we explicitly exclude? So this list was developed by Groveland folks. We literally just were the scribes and we took it down.
Okay, I, I think that answers the question. I'm just looking at, just to bring your attention to site 24.
So should we move to vote or?
That, in, in the, in the back of that property, it's, it's kind of low land, wetlands out in there.
Right, so the suggestion would be not all of that property would be deemed suitable for development. And you'd, you'd want to make sure that you preserved that portion that, that was environmentally constrained.
And did you get a price on that property? The last price I heard was over a million dollars.
No, sir. We didn't talk price or developers or anything.
That, that was the price that I, I heard on that.
So these are just suggested sites?
Right, nothing is in stone.
Nope, you could add to these, you could mark, to, to that gentleman's point, market these sites as the, the community rallied around or thought might be suitable. And then you could work with a developer to figure out how much is developable, what kind of units make the most sense, that kind of thing.
Okay, I, I just have one more question for the gentleman out back. You're part of this committee, this, um, board?
Planning board?
Yes.
Who asked 25?
And you weren't involved in this discussion?
No, actually I knew nothing about this.
You were on the emails, Molly. You were on all the emails.
So I did get a copy of, I got a copy of this to review it. Did this just come out?
Yep, but you were on all the emails with the planning last year because I, I sent them to all planning board members.
So if this just, if this report just came out, and my suggestion is permit, and, and I'll talk about this with the other board members. Okay, uh, this is a, I do like a lot of the statistics that you put together in this. I'm sure I did notice the data ended at 2015. I don't know if the statistical data is available.
Yes, it's, it's not really available. How long have you been working on this?
Since March of last year.
Since March of last year, so that's 15 months?
Yeah.
And, and, and any of these 15 months, you weren't involved in any of the process they've did?
He said I got the emails, but no, I, I was not at a single meeting of this and.
You didn't attend the meetings.
Well, that's unfortunate.
And I'll say that you've been absent at a lot of meetings then.
Yeah, decisions aren't made by the ones that show up. So I guess we just move, uh, on the vote?
Well, I would see if the planning board.
But I make a suggestion. For the planning, I would like sometime to go through this, and I'm not saying that this is a bad plan. But I think a 30, a 30-day, uh, delay on vote for planning, uh, just to review it and tweak it if it needs to be, and that's it?
Well, I think it's the will of your board.
Yeah.
It's the will of your board.
But aren't you making a vote as well?
Yeah, but that's a separate, that's a separate. Yeah, but that's a separate, that's a separate issue.
Separate.
I'll make a motion to vote for the production housing thing.
I'll second the motion to get it started. You know, this, this won't be done. I mean, it took us 45 years to have 80 units.
This is not a, this is not a sprinkled pixie dust on and it's gonna go away, right?
You know, I think we're on a, we're on a good track right now.
Right, I think if-
It may work, it may not.
And I think if this plan permits the town to have access to or apply for grant monies that it would not otherwise be able to apply for, then I think it's something that we should move forward on.
And more importantly, if it keeps the gun off our head.
Excuse me?
We've had the ability for five, five-
That's, that's not what, um-
We did the Affordable Housing Plan, but also did some of the other things we've done, too.
I think what Selectmen Carpenter is talking about is, if you have a housing production plan, you're given priority status for various state grants.
And I will just comment that our Affordable Housing Plan has expired. We don't have a current Affordable Housing Plan.
That's one of the things that definitely is a living document.
Expired in 2015.
So that's why we wanted to mesh these two in together, because that was real Groveland that, all of the statistics, and that would be an update for the housing-
So they have a motion to second it here.
Well, I think that's what we provided for you.
What, what, what I like what Wally said previously is the fact that we're looking for rental housing, okay? Seniors, okay? And family.
Right.
And that's what we really need in this town right now, and that, that's something we can hold in part to it. But we need to find, I think we've got something going, can't say, you know, for sure, some senior house.
That's a separate issue from this plan. So this, the question is-
No, 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 it's gonna be part of this plan.
No, but whether, whether you go in that direction or not, this is a separate, I, I don't think they're the same. I think you have to make a decision about this document, and that is a different piece. Like, it doesn't preclude, they're not mutually exclusive, I guess is what I'm saying.
What they say also in this document is the same thing we're talking about.
So are you saying that you should not move forward on this document?
No, I'm saying I think we can.
Okay, so that's what I'm asking.
So you've made, your board has made a motion, and I heard a second. Are you prepared to take a vote on this motion now?
Well, you have to act on the motion, at least.
Made a motion, made a second, okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye. Abstain.
All right, so that passes. So-
So I guess the-
So I would make a motion. I would make a motion that we accept the May 29, 2018 Groveland Housing Production Plan submitted by the Merrimack Valley Planning Commission today.
I'll, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? All those against? Abstain? Motion passed. Thank you so much for all of your valuable time. I know the work you've done has been exhaustive. It's been 15 months, it had to be very extensive, and wish to thank you for your time and effort.
Thank you. We learned a lot through the process, thank you, we'll be back.
Oh, we hope to, I hope to learn a lot more from the process, so if you could keep me in the loop and, and how it goes, I'd appreciate it. I could get, you know, schooled up on this myself.
We will do that.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you to Denise for shepherding us through the process.
Okay, next to the planning board members to discuss the inclusion of Affordable Housing Bylaw. Is anybody here to discuss that?
This was, Jim had asked, while their board was here, to discuss this with you.
Okay.
Yeah, I didn't even know.
Microphone back.
I'll smack him real quick.
I might try here. I spent probably the last four days looking through various towns in our area for what they have for an inclusionary bylaw. The inclusionary part of our bylaw was stolen by the Housing Committee, I believe, back in 2002, 2003, from Ipswich. They did not write it. They put it in, they recommended it be adopted into the zoning bylaw, and they gave the planning board the right to work with it. It is one of the hardest bylaws that we, I've ever seen in my life, and-
Do we have language on this?
Huh?
It's in your packet. I included the, section 10.
It's in the packet that we just got today, or the previous?
The original agenda from Thursday.
Thank you, sorry.
It doesn't mean- Do they pretend we're still here? It's, what I'm trying to do is, I'm trying to find something that people can understand. And right now, I've got four of them. Just gave out two in a previous meeting to them to look at it. There's two more in that packet. But it's, it's very hard to, to really understand the flow of that bylaw, number one, and number two, when you get into the computation, you're all over the place. And there's only two people in this town that know how to do the computation. One is me, and the other one's Debbie Webster. That's not good. And the rest of the planning board, they've looked at it, and they've tried to come up, how do we come up with this number?
Is that a special, like, what expertise is required to do that?
Believe me, it's, it's, it's flowing, it's knowing what's there, but it doesn't, it's not where you think it is, that's the problem.
So how do we help you get to your end game?
Our end game would be like we do with the four articles that went into town meeting, we'll work on it first, okay? I don't wanna just bring anything, you know?
When do you think you might have something prepared that we could look at in a relatively completed draft form?
I'm not gonna put a date on it, because I'm working on site plan right now. That's another part of the bylaw, it just doesn't grow. A lot of the developers said, you know, I can't understand this thing, and I agree with them. And that would, believe it or not, was a rewrite by a lawyer. But, you know, also, whether or not, you know, we go forward with SD Park to rezonate, you know, so it becomes more of a business area.
More commercial industrial.
Yeah, it kinda got kicked at a curb. I'd written it, but it got kicked at a curb because Town Council was trying to follow where we were going, delineating the whole area. And I, I agree with them, I've redone that, but I, I've gotta pass it by the board first. At that point, we'll send it to Town Council. What also SD Park wanted was part of the river. They have got the permit for, I believe, Johnson's Creek at this point. But one of the strangest things that we have, because we basically zoned the town, delineated the distances pretty much ourselves, and zone R2, which is the biggest part of the town residential, was glued together by the river. We own about 100 feet out into the river. And what, the reason why that's glued together, because the downtown is business, that's what breaks it.
Right, so how do we help you with the inclusion of the Affordable Housing Bylaw? I mean, how, how-
What do you think you need from us?
Yeah, how do we, what's the vehicle you see us being to help get you to that end game?
Maybe a copy of it to read through, at that point. What I'm after really is something that flows, and you get right to the point of it. What we have right now, it, it talks about four through nine units.
Doesn't work well.
Doesn't work well, and it, it implies that the 10th one, you have to give up a unit.
It's too vague.
It's so vague, it isn't funny, it doesn't say that. It goes on to say, in the same section, that you can also collect money.
So, so I'm with you. How do we help you?
So, can, can you, can I ask what your name is?
My name is Lisa Chandler, I'm also on the planning board.
Okay, thank you.
So, as we've done with all the previous things that we've had to bring through a town meeting for inclusion, we would write up the draft first, work on it, work in internally, and then present it to the board for their review, comment, editing, anything like that.
We'll go to Town Council first, and then to us?
Yeah, yes.
Same process is all of our-
So that makes sense. Do you work in?
Go for it.
Yeah, I mean, we can amend that thing, but I mean, like I'm, like I'm saying, I mean, I, I would rather find something better, something written better. We're not gonna write anything anymore, we're gonna let, we'll steal something, and we'll steal something better.
Why reinvent the wheel?
And then we'll give it to Town Council, let him make his changes that he wants to make, and then come back. We ran into problems with rezoning SD Park last year, because he felt certain things that we did, he couldn't understand it.
Okay.
So you guys just work on it as a board, get a draft together, and you get it before us?
Yeah, that's what we're gonna do.
Yeah, it's probably the best way to do it.
And we'll work with you in, in the best capacity we can to help you achieve your goals.
Yeah. Okay, that's, that's a good deal.
Fair enough?
Good deal.
Thank you.
What we're looking for, we could, we're, to do some senior housing that's affordable right now, we're looking at free land, is what we're looking at.
Do we have any?
No, someone else does.
It's free land.
Trust, trust me, that's all I can tell you.
Somebody has free land? Okay.
Well, no, they, they own it.
But they're willing to.
It would help them, and I'll not explain them.
Okay. Well, when you come up with something, we're, we'll be here.
Nothing's easy, I hate to say it, it's just not.
If it was easy, they wouldn't ask you to do it, right? We know your reputation in town, you get things done. That's why they give you the tough tasks.
Yeah. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
Moving right along, we're going to review the town's Code of Conduct.
Can I make a suggestion?
Yes, you may.
Not to tell you how to run your meeting, but if we could-
No, listen, I'm new at this, tell me all you-
If we could streamline this, so Denise doesn't pass out from her cold, that'd be, we win.
Here, I'm not infected by this one.
Well, I'm in the crossfire here, so-
We can table, I was the person who asked for the Code of Conduct. Can we table that, since we're already at 8:30?
We certainly can.
And we discussed it at another meeting.
Make a motion to table that?
Yes, I make a motion that we table reviewing the Code of Conduct policy.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Second.
Any discussion? No, all those in favor?
Yes.
Good, we'll table that. Moving right along, as quickly as we can, we have votes of the board.
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 17, 2018 meeting.
Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? As I see none, all those in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Abstain?
No, 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 I'm with you.
Okay.
Denise, do you?
I, I'd really like, listen, if I was in class, I'd dismiss her. If she was my employee, which I think she is at this point, I'd say, get the heck home so you don't make the rest of us sick. So, good, go, fly.
So I'll make a motion that we approve the executive session minutes from April 17, 2018.
Second it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Yes.
All those opposed? Good.
I make a motion that we approve the minutes from the April 30, 2018 meeting.
Second it.
Point of order. All right, I don't think you can make that, you were absent, so I'll make the motion.
Oh, was I absent? I'm so sorry.
I'll make, I'll make the motion.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second it.
Or, any further discussion? All those in favor? You can vote. Okay, good.
I make a motion that we accept the resignation of John Osborne from the Capital Improvement Committee, effective June 30, 2018.
I'll, I'll second it.
Any further discussion? I just have a comment. Mr. Osborne, it was a pleasure, I had the pleasure of serving on the Capital Improvement Committee with him for four years. He's a, he's a unique gentleman, one I've grown very fond of. The Capital Improvement Committee will be lost without you, and it's too bad. So now, the votes? All those in favor?
Yes.
I will just comment, we will need to discuss the Capital Improvement Committee, 'cause I do believe four out of the five members, or at least three, are resigning. So we may need to look at that committee and either rework our bylaw, or look at some ways. Yes, they are.
Do we want to solicit representation, or you wanna revisit whether that committee?
I, I think, so some of the reason why they're resigning, I think, is because, I think the bylaw is disconnected from what really should be happening. So I think it's something we should look at, at least that part of it, but we will need to solicit, 'cause our bylaw does require a capital improvement committee. Currently, John's the only one who's formally put it in writing. Jeff Pappas did tell me, prior to town meeting, that he was planning to resign, as did Kevin Cuniff. I'm, I'm not sure if they both are still planning to, but-
Some of it I know stems from their feeling of being underappreciated, and I wanna let them know, as the chair here, I, I know what they go through, I know what their work, and this chair will not underappreciate any single one of them, so hopefully, give me a list, maybe I can talk to them and get them to reconsider, at least for another year anyways.
And as an adjunct to that, we could solicit representation, and then put that on the agenda for a future meeting to flush out.
Fine. So, all those in favor? I guess, did we already make that vote?
We'll do it again.
Nope. All those in favor? All those opposed? Okay.
I make a motion that we accept the end-of-year transfers, as outlined in the materials forwarded by Denise. I'm not gonna go through them all, but they're all outlined, it's dated May 16, 2018, signed by the Finance Board.
So this is the first round of sort of year-end shuffles that we can legally make in our last two months of the fiscal year. There will be one more before the end of the fiscal year, and then we have 15 days into the new fiscal year, once the final warrants are posted to close all of our deficits.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, any further discussion? As I see none, all of us in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Good. Old Business, we'll start with you, Mr. Wood.
I do not have anything for Old Business.
Okay, Ms. Carpenter.
So just two things. I saw the letter that you did for the Fire Department consultants. Just one response so far, is that what you said? Just one response so far, is that what you said?
So we received one, I'm waiting on two more. So I've been in communication with two other companies that are planning to submit requests. I spoke to the second company today, he thought he was going to get it last week. So I have told them that I plan to present them to you all on June 11. So hopefully, we will have them. They're both saying by the end of this week.
Okay, and then, not to belabor an old issue, but town manager information?
I've sent you that.
You did? That's me, I'm sorry.
I can refer that email.
You. All set.
Okay, Mr. Selectman Dunn?
I don't, oh, there's a note.
Selectman Watson?
No, nothing.
I will table my discussion for old business for the sake of both of your healths.
And mine.
Yes, correspondence, we have criteria for a fire department consultant, resignation letter from Anita Wright as the public health nurse effective June 15, 2018, disclosure of appearance of conflict of interest from Sam Jocelyn, building inspector, Anita Wright, public hearing officer, public health nurse, COA board members, response to Jordan Moore's public comments on May 14, 2018. And now we're at finance director's time, do yourself a favor.
I had two really quick items. I would like to recognize and congratulate firefighter Brian Belfieri for his efforts off duty by providing lifesaving assistance in Haverhill. While he was out plowing this winter, there was a call for cardiac matter over his radio, and he went unseen and assisted in saving a gentleman's life. So I just want to recognize him on that. He was honored last Tuesday at a ceremony, so congratulations to Brian.
Well deserved.
And then I wanted to thank the students from Penticott who worked with Bill Dunn to clean up Elm Park and planted some flowers down there. So thanks to Bill for providing tools and his assistance. It looks really nice down there. That's all I have.
That is Selectman Dunn, he's a never-ending source of community spirit. Selectman's time, we'll start at this end of the table, Mr. Watson. Selectman Watson, anything for Selectman's time?
No, well, yeah, just the one thing. I see that we had, we got part of Main Street paved, and if anybody has, had written over that, that's the way Route 97 should have been done. There's a nice smooth transition from the old pavement to the new pavement, and it certainly, this company did a, did a better job than was done on Route 97. That's all.
Mr. Selectman Dunn?
Yeah, I was going to give this last time I was here, I wasn't here, I got a letter from a farmer. He knew I was trying to make business for Groveland. I'll submit it to the chair. He's looking to try and turn the strawberry fields and also if the VC Park would be interested into mowing them and taking care of the fields and turning around and paying the town for the hay off the fields at the end of the year. So we can put it as an agenda item and discuss it further. I told him I'd pass it through and see where it goes.
Absolutely.
He'll give the town money, he'll, he'll take care of the first year of getting the fields up to where they need to be, and then the second year he'd be paying us for the, the product coming out of there or whatever.
And where was the, where were the two areas?
Strawberry fields and he mentioned VC Park.
Nuns Hill, that area?
Where, anywhere we want, he'd do it. He'd be interested in doing it. But the first year, he's going to have to invest a little bit of money to get the fields up to snuff, and the second year he'd pay us.
Definitely something we can discuss. Ms. Carpenter?
I don't have anything other than to thank the members of this board who went to the May 24 Memorial Day. My son graduated that evening and I couldn't be there, and I appreciate that of people, I'm not sure who went, but-
Ed and I went.
Thank you.
Selectman Wood?
I only have six things. Just kidding, I don't have anything.